Start before 6:30. All right, welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, January 15th, 2020, our first meeting of the year. Can we have a roll call from our city clerk Allison, please?
Vice Mayor Harrow.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmer.
Here.
Councilmember Walton.
Here.
Mayor Way. Here. And let the record reflect that councilmember Candela is excused tonight. I see we didn't get on the agenda our Pledge of Allegiance, but I think, should we add that? We generally do. All right, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. We must.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our second item on the agenda is public comment. This is public comment from items that are not on the agenda. And just a reminder that because it has not been agendized, the council can really have no for lengthy conversations regarding the matter. Do I have anyone in the audience interested in public comment? Say your name.
Cindy Winter. To start the new year off on a small but happy note. For at least 20 years cyclists and pedestrians have been asking successive Larkspur DPW staff for a safer intersection at the entrance to the Redwood High School east parking lot. Finally, during this Christmas break, our current DPW got it done. All who use that intersection on foot or on bike, or who are disabled, are grateful, especially knowing that at the same time DPW had incomparably larger projects that needed attention, the Bonner Bridge and Measure B. There is a new large median refuge island and a long prayed-for curb ramp, as well as improved crosswalks. The new curb ramp lies at the north end of the High Canal path, which crosses the San Remaker Trail. The south end of the path connects to Lakeside Drive in Corte Madera. Most of the path lies within Corte Madera, and they have recently renovated all of it, including working with Larkspur, our small portion of the path's surface. The path is well-used on both ends. It provides easy and safe access to schools, but local people of all ages enjoy it, too. It's a kind of neighborly path, joining our Twin Cities and well worth improvement. Both jurisdictions can take pride in a job well done.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else from the audience like to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda? Come on up.
My name is Anna Harrison, and I am part of the Marin Park Residents Committee. And so I'm calling to see what the timeline is on making a decision about the rent stabilization for our park. And I don't know if you can answer that now, or...
I can answer that. They are working on getting the first meeting on the calendar for the end of this month. Between our... Is that correct? No? About from our committee?
Would you like me to clarify, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please clarify.
The council appointed an ad hoc committee.
That's what I meant.
Vice Mayor Haroff and councilmember Paulson. The ad hoc committee has met. We just clarified, actually, in the last 10 minutes, the first stakeholders meeting. We'll now be inviting stakeholders to a meeting to discuss issues.
Thank you.
Are you considering residents as stakeholders, or the owners, or...
The stakeholders group will include representatives of the residents.
I'm sorry?
The stakeholders group, we will be inviting resident representatives. Thank you.
And that's at the end of the month?
They're finalizing a date really soon.
And my other short question is, I couldn't find any handicap parking spots in front of City Hall. Am I crazy, or is there not one?
Madam Mayor, there are two to the north... Sorry, south of the building.
We have two on property, right outside the door here.
In front of the library?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see any signs. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience like to address the council on matters not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, which is presentations and proclamations, which we do not have tonight. And number four is approval of the consent calendar.
Madam...
Yes?
Madam Mayor, on the dais in the back of the room, item 4.5, which is an informational item, there is an edit provided. There was one line that had been missing. This is the MOU with the Employees Association. That edit will be posted online, and during this review period of two weeks, available to the public.
Okay. Did all the councilmembers get that additional amendment attachment, excuse me, to one? All right, do I have any councilmember who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion? No? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. All right, City Manager's oral report, please.
Happy New Year, councilmembers. It's my pleasure to begin by introducing you and the public to someone who's kept coming back for over a week, so I think we've got him, at least for a while, and Franklin Escobedo is sitting in the front row. And I'm going to ask him to come up to the mic and introduce himself as our new library director, and I'd like him to come up and say a few words.
Hi, everybody. I'm Franklin Escobedo. I am really happy to be here. I'm happy and looking forward to working with the public and working with you on the future of the library. So, thank you for having me. Thank you.
Franklin's hit the ground running, and I did push him to talk about his career, but he has over 20, 25 years of library experience. And that's not counting, I think, when he was volunteering for his mother, who was a county librarian here in California. So, he's got more experience than most in terms of doing just about anything you need to do in the library. Additionally, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, you're very well aware, we are experiencing a wet season, and we're expecting a storm tomorrow. The staff's working hard to be prepared for that, but we do advise folks to be cautious out there, particularly in our neighborhoods and streets that sometimes experience backups, particularly if the tides are up too high. So, we're monitoring those situations carefully in preparation for this storm. And then, there was some coverage of this, but want to congratulate Polyworks Director, City Engineer Julian Skinner is here, and his project team. The transfer of traffic to the new span that's part of our bridge went very well. And I know it's a little chaotic on Bonner right now because of all the different things that are going on, but folks are being careful and transitioning through that space nicely, and the project continues at a very good pace. So, really appreciative of that. And I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Does the council have any questions of the city manager on his report, or any additional questions? No? All right, thank you. We're moving on to six councilmembers' oral reports and comments. I guess we'll start over by Gabe, if you have anything you'd like to report out to us.
Hello, everybody.
Hit the mic button. I'll shoot. There you go.
Hi, everybody. It's my first day up here, so go easy on me. Just two things to report. As the city manager indicated, we had a meeting to organize the ad hoc committee for the mobile home park, and I'm really looking forward to that process with Vice Mayor Haroff and all the stakeholders. And then, secondly, the fire safety, and specifically the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee, I've been getting more involved with that. And we have between Corte Madera and Larkspur 43 neighborhood response groups, and met with some of the people, including the Corte Madera City Manager, and I'm really excited about starting to see more groups stand up and more training happening and so forth. So, more to come on that, but thank you.
Kevin, anything? I just have a short sort of follow-up to that, is that I'm also sitting on the board of Fire Safe Marin. And Marin now has the nation's largest number of fire-safe neighborhoods and communities in the country. And Larkspur just added two new ones, so we're all coming along and trying to get neighborhoods better prepared for wildland fire preservation and prevention. So, all right, so we will move on to our public hearings. Tonight, we have four, and many of this will come from our planning and building director, Neil Toff, but the first one is 7.1, Marin Sanitary Service Rates for Garbage and Recycling Collection for 2020. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a required public hearing to consider the rates that your sanitary service franchisee provide... service provides. We have a number of representatives for both the sanitary service provider, Marin Sanitary Service, and we also have the consultant that Larkspur and other customers of Marin Sanitary use to evaluate rates, and they're going to give you a presentation shortly. I did want to make clear for the record that the rates are vetted through a process jointly by several of the Marin Sanitary Service customers. I represent the city through that process on behalf of Larkspur, so if there are questions about how that process works, I'm happy afterward to discuss them, although I think the material you have captures the result of all the work that went into it. With that, I think Emily Ginsburg's here, from R3 Consulting. R3 is an independent third party that the franchisers group, which is the customers of Marin Sanitary, retain to do a lot of the heavy lifting, and Emily is here to give you a brief presentation and to answer any specific questions you have about the rate analysis. I'm turning it over to you, Emily.
Welcome, Emily. And this is, you're going to be working from this handout here?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific.
It's our PowerPoint slide. Hello, members of the council and the public here tonight. I'm Emily Ginsburg from R3 Consulting.
Can you... I think he needs...
Oh.
You need to get a little closer, I think, to the mic.
Is that better?
How's that, everybody?
Better? Okay.
Better. Thank you.
I'm Emily Ginsburg from R3 Consulting Group. R3 works exclusively for municipalities on solid waste matters. We don't work for the waste haulers. And we were engaged to conduct a third-party independent review of Marin Sanitary Services' rate application. Rates are adjusted annually, and MSS is actually here tonight. If you have any questions specific to their operations, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer. So, tonight, there's a new rate methodology that was used for this review of the 2020 rates. Previously, there is a much more complex process used to assess MSS's rate application, but this new methodology, I'm happy to report, is a success story. It really has streamlined and simplified and made less costly this process of setting rates. The increases that we're seeing are more transparent and predictable. We are using a national index, a CPI, essentially, to adjust most of the costs, and we expected it to perform around 2.5% to 5%, and it's landed right in that range. The focus really is on the rates paid, so revenues or compensation due to MSS, and not really micromanaging expenses. So, it is a much more simple approach. There is an option every five years to do a base year adjustment, which is what was done for the 2019 rate review, a much more complex and detailed process, but that does set the rates based on actual costs. And, but this year for 2020, it is indexed RRI approach. So, for Larkspur, we calculated a 3.99% rate adjustment, and... Oh, sorry about that. This table just quickly summarizes what goes into that percentage. Mostly, it is collector operations, so compensation due to MSS for the services that they provide. Next, garbage landfilling or organics processing. This isn't something that's directly under MSS's control. It has to do with the amount of waste the community generates, and then just the cost per ton to responsibly landfill or recover organics through composting. Other, we kind of combined as government fees, like our franchise fee, interest, which we saw moderate change in, and then finally, change in law. And I want to call that one out just a little bit, because this really has to do with unfunded state mandates. Primarily AB 1826 for this year, there was a little bit more of an expense incurred. But, you know, just to give you a heads up, we are expecting that to become a larger part of rate adjustments in future years with new state laws being passed and really changing the industry. SB 1383, for example, focuses on organics, landfill, and the methane that produces, and puts a number of responsibilities on jurisdictions to address that and reduce organics that go to landfill. So, just a quick overview of what this means for customers. It would increase rates $1.88 per month for customers that have a 32-gallon cart size, which is the most common service level, and it would adjust rates up to $49 per month. A little bit more about the changes in law outreach costs. This really is just two tools or online ways of reaching customers and helping kind of with the tracking and implementation efforts. The first one is a recollect annual subscription, so it's available on MSS's website. Where does it go, Joe? Simply teaching people how to, you know, correctly recycle or separate their waste. The second is a recyclist annual subscription, and it's an exciting tool that we've seen more jurisdictions and haulers adopt. It really helps with tracking compliance with AB 1826, and that's the mandatory organics recycling law in California, tracking customers that are compliant, noncompliant, and that feeds into the annual reporting that's required by the state. Here on this slide, I just want to give you a bit of a regional view of garbage rates for others in Marin County, and kind of where you land in that comparison. For Larkspur, you're the second green bar on this chart. All the green are communities serviced by MSS. The two orange are Town of Fairfax and Nuselmo, also nearby. And blue is Bill Valley Refuge Service. Tampa Bay's CSD, they are the highest, but they're a municipal operation, so a bit of different set of conditions for that jurisdiction. But, as you can see, I think you compare favorably to others in the region. That gray bar is just the average across these rates. And I just want to take a minute to point out those two reds, because I know they're much lower than the others. There's a reason for that. So, the red are legacy rates that don't cover the cost of service. They're contracts previously held by the Rado Group and bought out by Recology, and we're anticipating those to increase over the course of this next year. So, that should bring them into the average with the other communities. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this. You're probably used to seeing Gar Schultz, my colleague. He comes every year to talk about rates. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, but any questions that I can answer, I'll work with him and with staff to make sure that they're addressed.
Well, we're glad you're here. Thank you for that presentation. I think we'll start on the dais, just ask questions of you from here, and then we'll open it up to the public. So, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. In the past, when we've had this conversation, if you could refresh my memory, how the complexity of the roadways and topography in Larkspur compared to the other customers from this service provider, how that figures into the overall assessment?
Yeah, so, you're talking about hard-to-service areas, those that have maybe really small street up a hill where you have to have a special truck to kind of do that service. I'm not as familiar with the Larkspur hard-to-service areas myself, but I might redirect that question to MSS here, because I can speak directly for the operations in the field. But to answer your questions, yes. Generally, if you have a more hard-to-service area, your costs are going to be higher just because of more time, more specialized equipment needed to service those accounts.
If I can just add for you, Councilmember Gilmer, remind you that in Attachment 3, which is Exhibit 8 of the resolution, we historically have two rates, one for hillside areas and one for flatland areas. So, that's one way we try to address the fact that it's more costly to serve hillside areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess just continuing on that same line. You know, if I look at your graph, so I just ran a quick calculation, and we're 14% higher than San Rafael, 20% higher than Ross. And, you know, digging through more of this, I think there's a vehicle impact fee in the rate structure. Maybe you can explain those a little bit? I mean, I think the hills are part of the answer, but there seemed to be another answer as well.
Yeah, there is a little bit more to the equation. For certain communities, and you're one, there can be other city or local fees that are part of the calculation for the solid waste rates. For you, there is that vehicle impact fee that just increases the overall 2020 revenue requirement that rates need to cover. So, it just, it does create a little bit more pressure to meet that. For, and actually, I think, Attachment 2 of our report, it kind of shows like all the different Marin franchisers group agencies, and kind of what's included in their rates, just kind of at that high level. Other agencies have, you know, maybe a higher franchise fee or a higher revenue requirement to meet, and that does kind of play into the differences in the rates as well. I think, you know, part of the answer, too, could be the rate structure. You know, this is a percentage rate increase, and for those communities that maybe started at kind of like a lower monthly rate versus a higher monthly rate, over time, there's kind of a divergence, right, when you're applying that percentage year over year to increase the rate, just because you have a higher base? So...
A follow-up question on the vehicle impact fee. That's the fee that the city of Larkspur adopted, correct? And that's built into this and passed through to the customers?
So, the city has done numerous analyses that show that larger vehicles, multi-axle vehicles, do the greatest amount of damage to our roads. So, the council's adopted two fees to capture that impact. One is a fee that's charged to large commercial vehicles that are doing projects within the city. That's our standard vehicle impact fee. We separately assigned a fee to the refuse provider because of the regular use of our roads by the, by their trucks. They are entitled to, and did pass that fee through to the customers. There was one year that that created a little bit more significant increase. Now, it simply explains the delta between us and communities that have chosen not to do that.
And that component of the rate is reinvested into the city's infrastructure?
It's a restricted pot of money that the city has solely to reinvest in the roads. It's part of our maintenance program.
I just think that's an important part of the methodology, and explains the delta.
Do you have any questions? All right.
No, I don't have any questions, actually, but I appreciate your presentation, and I'm actually happy, I think we're now in the, is it the first year of the implementation of the new rate methodology? And I think that's important to acknowledge, that we're going forward with some stability that we haven't necessarily had in the past.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just two more questions. You know, sort of thinking about the decision tonight as, you know, validating the methodology and also saying that Larkspur proves that the average customer is going to pay $22.50 more a year. I'm wondering if we sat here next year, you know, we have the WST, you know, index inflation, so could we expect that no matter what happens, the rates would not be more than 5% next year? That's question one. And two is, I'm wondering, and this may be more an operational question, you know, I realize that, you know, AB 1826, you know, and other regulations can impact fees, but I'm looking at it's $1,996, so 2,000 is the total of our millions we spend. So, regulatory environment aside, are there any efficiencies that are bringing down the costs? Any technologies, any things that could be cost-reducing?
Yeah, you know, those are really good questions. You know, part of it, a lot of these costs are fixed costs, just in labor and capital to have the trucks, you know, go by everyone's home and pick up the material. So, there isn't, you know, much that can be done there. Something to think about, though, is the cost just on the amount of material that's generated, that has to be processed or landfilled. And there could be, you know, through source reduction, through, you know, more practice around recycling, or you could theoretically reduce the amount of waste you produce, and that could have good cost impacts for you. And I'm sorry, what was your, the first question?
The first was just, you know, the methodology seems like for the city, it benefits the franchisees as having a cap of 5%, that no matter what happens, you know, a new law comes that's extremely expensive for you, it wouldn't pass on more than 5% to us. I'm wondering if I understand that correctly.
Yeah, so there is a floor and a cap. I think you're referring to the Exhibit B methodology. And, you know, for just the commenting on the WST, the index itself, it was selected because it does have a very smooth line. We did expect it to fall in the range of about 2.5% to 5% annually. You know, unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball, and we can't say or guarantee that it will always be right within that narrow range. But I think, you know, overall, you are going to see a smoother trend line in your rate adjustments. I'm sorry, I don't have this slide here today, but I did kind of map out rate adjustments over time, going back 10 years, and under the old methodology, it would really go very high and low and kind of like go bouncing up and down year over year. But for this year, it's actually landed kind of right on that average, which I think is a really nice and good indicator.
Do you...
Thank you.
In your methodology, can you break out a comparison between communities that have a lot of multifamily homes, condominiums, and apartments compared to ones, for instance, let's say the town of Ross that has fewer than Larkspur does? Is, what, 46% of our residents live in multifamily dwellings? Can that be broken out, maybe in this methodology in the future, to compare a little bit more the demography of the, of communities?
Yeah, I mean, you could definitely look at different community characteristics, and you're kind of thinking about like overall cost impacts and what that means. For this methodology, it really focuses on the compensation or revenue due to MSS and not their costs. So, I mean, yeah, there are going to be differences in communities, but it is just a more simplified approach. So, I think, you know, if their costs were to go up and kind of like servicing a community that's going through like a growth period, to say, or more multifamily or more commercial, that wouldn't necessarily be, I think, captured right away. But there is always the opportunity for a detailed rate review, where, again, it kind of resets our base year for the cost of providing the service.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do want to make clear for the record, so the multifamily dwellings you're talking about are commercial accounts, not residential accounts.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So, there's already a distinction built into the system.
Okay, thank you for that. I didn't know that. Any further questions? All right, then I'll open the public hearing, and you may have a seat, and then if there's some questions that need to come up, we'll have you come up at the end and answer them. I'm opening the... Thank you. Opening the public hearing. Anybody from the community like to ask a question of this item? Come to the...
It may be helpful for the community, Madam Mayor, to invite the hauler, if you'd like, from Marin Sanitary, and they may want to...
Would you like to present?
If I see any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Come up to the microphone, and then we'll capture your voice better. And introduce yourself, please.
For the record, my name is Joe Garberino, and I've been here since 1955, and we have a great pleasure serving this community, always have. And we're doing the best we can with the situation with recycling, but I think it's going to get better. They're building more and more paper mills in the United States now, and it'll take another six or seven months before they're up and running. And that's just about it. We do the best we can, and the customer is always king and queen here, and we do whatever we can to please everybody.
Good. Council, have any questions, Mr. Gaber?
No, thank you.
Gaber, no, wait. Gaber, no, I can't pronounce it right. Gaberino. All right, so the public hearing is open. Does anyone have a question they would like to ask either of our presenters or the council? Please join the microphone and state your name.
Pardon me, James Holmes, Larkspur. I am concerned about the proposed increase. It's essentially 4%. I mean, 3.99, but that's kind of a, you know, we all seen that marketing ploy. The documents did not indicate the past history of increases. Last year's increase was 8.52%, so this is certainly an improvement over that. However, in 2017, there was a, you know, the... However, in, in 2017, there was a, you know, the staff report or the consultant report gave a 15-year retrospective, and it indicated that the average, the yearly, or the, the annualized average was 5.19% over a period of 15 years. So this is essentially not too far from that average. And I, I calculated that if, if that was the case, then over the 15-year period, there has been an increase of, I think at that time it was 78%, and if you add in the 8.52% last year, it's now around 80%. That's a lot, that's a big increase over 15 years. Not a lot of things have gone up 80% over 15 years in a generally deflationary economy, except maybe rent. But that is of considerable concern for me, and it leads me to believe that these increases should get significant scrutiny. But of particular concern is that the, a couple of other similarly situated communities seem to be paying considerably less. For example, in the IJ, there was an article about an increase of 30% to Recology for West Marin, and it stated that after the 30% increase, it would push the tab for a 32-gallon can in West Marin up to $41 a month. Well, current, I have a 20-gallon can, and that's, that's what I pay. I pay $41 a month. So it's same thing. So essentially, the folks in West Marin, after a 30% increase, are paying for a 32-ga, or I'm paying for a 20-gallon can what the folks in West Marin are paying after a 30% increase, and, and so it's obvious that it doesn't add up very well. But I think more dramatically and drastically is the difference, and the point was made about comparing similarly situated communities. And so I think the most similarly situated community, especially in terms of hills, is Corte Madera. And yet we see a dramatic difference between the town of Corte Madera and the town of Larkspur. And I do not think we have ever gotten a coherent explanation as to why Corte Madera gets such a better deal from its hauler, Mill Valley Refuge, than, than we do. But also in terms of hills, I would also point out, the city of Sausalito has substantial hills, and it too is considerably lower than, it's a little bit higher than Corte Madera, but it's considerably lower than Larkspur. So I am concerned about the fact that, that we seem to be paying more and, and with no explanation. I would just add one point here.
Let's make this your last point, because we need to move on.
When I look at this, when I look at this chart, I don't know if this includes the franchise fees. In these charts, they should leave the franchise fees out, so we know that we are comparing apples to apples.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
One, one other point.
Last point.
And that is with respect to inclusion of things under AB 1826. The, that, those are costs for compliance solely for commercial, and the commercial costs should not be figured into the, the residential costs. So I would raise a question about the inclusion of anything with respect to AB 1826 into the residential cost.
Thank you very much.
So in conclusion, I think that this has to be looked at more closely, and we need to know why we are paying more than a lot of similarly situated communities.
All right. Would you?
What would you like to, Madam Mayor? Would you like me to respond as we go along, or would you like to wait?
Yeah, why don't we respond as I don't? Do we have others who would like to address the council on this matter? No, so why don't we respond now?
I think the most important point to make is this is not apples to apples. Rate comparisons are not apples to apples. Each community's rate represents a number of variables very specific to that community. The, the most significant is the package of services being offered, and we first have to unbundle for every community exactly what that hauler is doing for that residential rate. And we would find differences. We'd find differences between the various Marin sanitary customers and the customers of Mill Valley Refuge Recology, because they've each negotiated a different bundle of particular services for their community. In addition, what we don't show you, which we go into great detail at the negotiating table, that when we make sure that we're feeling comfortable with how we compare to other communities, is when our hauler had to negotiate its most recent landfill contract, because that affects prices. And I don't actually know the last time the other haulers had to negotiate theirs versus when we had to negotiate ours. I can look it up, and it's something that would affect the rates as well. And then most significantly that came out earlier is we all charge different fees, and we have elected to make sure that the impact of the trucks is reflected properly in our rate, and that's one of the things that has made Larkspur higher than some of the other communities. Some of the other communities are revisiting that issue now, and I won't be surprised if they, they catch up to us rapidly.
Okay, if there's no one else who would like to address the council on this matter, then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to us. Is there any further conversation or questions of the, of our presenters or our, go ahead?
I just have a comment that I'm appreciative of the efforts made to create a methodology that works toward a stabilization of the rates. And it's not so unpredictable as it has been in the past, so I just want for myself to express appreciation for the effort that has gone into this. I look forward to seeing more data points.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right, then.
I just want to echo that. I kind of view the presentation today as kind of an update on the implementation of decisions that this council has made previously in adoption of a methodology. And I think we're working under that framework, and I appreciate the presentation tonight, and I appreciate very much the tremendous efforts of the service provider in making sure that our recycling is done and our trash is picked up, and those services are provided to everyone who lives in our community. So thank you very much.
All right, at that, I will accept a, a, a motion to approve the Resolution 0120.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? All right, Resolution 0120 passes. Thank you very much for the presentation and, and your opinions.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all.
Moving on to 7.2, which is to introduce and waive first reading of an ordinance amending Chapters 18.23 accessory dwelling units and 18.24 junior accessory dwelling units of the Larkspur Municipal Code to comply with the new 2019 state housing legislation. So Neil, you're up on all these, it looks like.
Thank you.
Just give a few minutes for people who are exiting.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. If you remember, we're, we're here again tonight because the state has been very active in this last year in passing housing legislation to address the housing crisis that the, the state has been experiencing, and particularly here in the Bay Area. As part of that legislation, there are a number of items, various bills that were passed having to do with accessory dwelling units. And kind of make a long story short, we were here earlier this year and did update our code to align with prior amendments by the state. And I think we ended up with an ordinance that did a good job of balancing, reducing obstacles to ADU development and encouraging ADU development in a manner that hopefully would keep, maintain the character of the neighborhoods and particularly in protecting some of those areas that are, have concerns for wildfire and emergency access. However, the state, to our surprise, a few months ago, we had kind of been, been anticipating these changes as more of a cleanup and clarification, but really, there were some very wholesale changes that have significant implications to the ordinance, and I think potentially to, that could raise concerns with the neighborhoods. So I, I did prepare a presentation for you tonight to also, to go back through a little background. We were pretty brief in the staff report, and I think for the benefit of our new council member and anyone in the public, I'll kind of go back a little bit through the housing lawn, where we, how we've got here, and then discuss the ordinance changes that we're proposing. As you'll also note, our next item on the agenda is an interim ordinance, which is a mirror, basically the same thing as this ordinance, which we're proposing to adopt as an urgency measure, because this process to adopt a permanent ordinance will take, with a second reading in effectiveness, takes another month and a half. And given the complications of the state law and the mandates, we feel it'd be best to get something in place since this ordinance, since the state mandates are now in effect as of January 1st. And, and in fact, the way they're written is they, if you don't have an ordinance that's consistent, your entire sort of ordinance is null and void. So that presents some concerns. A number of jurisdictions are in similar boats, they are preparing changes to their ordinances and, at the same time, adopting urgency ordinances. So to quickly go through, let's start with a little background. Accessory dwelling units, commonly known as granny units, are typically a second unit attached to a single-family dwelling, whether through a conversion or new, or attachment or, or a detached structure. It's a secondary facility with sleeping, bathing, kitchen facilities typically has a second or it's on entrance. Part of the impetus to encourage more development of ADUs is our, the state housing crisis, and the, the state does require that cities and counties have a housing element and provides detailed requirements for these housing elements. And as part of that housing element, every, every eight-year cycle, the cities are given a regional housing needs assessment, and basically, that's a projection to meet certain housing goals. We all, every, every agency has to meet these housing goals, and the housing element has to demonstrate how we're going to do that, and it must identify sites within the jurisdiction in order to do that. That can be individual sites. In the case of our housing element, it also identifies that second units will have a role to play in meeting our, our low and affordable housing income categories. Housing elements are submitted to the Department of Housing Community Development to assure compliance with the RENA and the state housing law. Failure to comply can result in lawsuits, carryover of housing numbers, and can restrain access to certain funding and grant opportunities. Recent legislation is also beginning to impose penalties to override, override local zoning controls and discretionary review procedures for cities that do not, not just not meet their RENA requirements, but that really don't meet their production goals as, as the cycle moves along. We're seeing more aggressive legislation on the horizon. In 2015, the City Council adopted our 2015 to 23 housing element, and it does have policies to encourage development of second units. And we also included a policy to adopt regulations for junior accessory dwelling units, which are kind of a dwelling unit light. In doing this, the council recognized that ADUs and JADUs could be a valuable way to meet some of our housing needs, and doing so in a way that does not necessarily rely on large-scale development. So I'm going to give a brief history on accessory dwelling units in Larkspur and kind of how we've evolved with the state regulations to our current situation. So for many years, the city of Larkspur did permit accessory dwelling units or second units in the single-family zones, but it was subject to a use permit. And these were limited 700 square feet. We've required additional parking in conjunction with full parking requirements, and this required a public hearing and findings of approval. And because these requirements were fairly restrictive, and the public hearing process involved neighbors, this often would discourage property owners from going through the process. In 2003, state legisl-
Yeah, we just have a short question.
It's not really a question, more of a, of a comment, and I hope you'll take it with the right degree of levity. Whenever I see a slide that's labeled "The History of Larkspur Regulations," it automatically sends me into shock. So I want you to take that with.
We're referring to ADU regulations.
Well, just, I, anyway, brief.
All right. Point taken.
So in, in 2003, the legislature really encouraged cities to no longer require discretionary process. So at that time, we adopted regulations that eliminated the discretionary process but continued to rely on standards. And again, these standards are somewhat difficult, can be challenging for property owners, and we are, we did not see a lot of ADUs even after eliminating the public hearing requirement. So as was programmed into the housing element, we did in 2016 adopt the JADU regulations, which is essentially, I refer to as ADU Lite, and it's a smaller unit using a kitchenette. It must be converted within a house. And the benefit of having this approach is, as a smaller unit, is you're exempted from having to provide the parking requirement, that being one of the large obstacles. So in conjunction with a relatively small dwelling unit that's more or less having a roommate, that was seen as an incentive to potentially gain more dwelling units at a relatively affordable clip. In 2017 and 18, we did have housing legislation, which I mentioned earlier, which really began to mandate reducing obstacles to ADU development, reducing the zoning regulations, and encouraging ADU development. And we did hold workshops with the Planning Commission and the council earlier this year, and then eventually adopted an ordinance which liberalized the ADU regulations in alignment with state law. And so this did allow for one ADU and one JADU, junior accessory unit per site, but not both. It eliminated the one-bedroom maximum, but retained the 700-square-foot minimum size. We did allow up to 1,200 square feet for significantly larger lots that might accommodate up to a 4,000-square-foot home. In doing this, the state law, we aligned it with state law so that the parking regulations really required no additional parking under many circumstances. In particular, sites that are, where you're dealing with an interior conversion, or you have a site that's near transit, the state law prohibited requiring additional parking. We could require replacement of parking lost, of required parking that's lost, and we did, after some discussion on the pros and cons, did require the owner occupancy requirement to be retained. In doing this process, the city did identify restricted areas in Madrone Canyon and up on Marina Vista that were seen as having challenges in terms of accessibility ingress and egress for emergency vehicles and particularly emergency evacuation. And using language in the state regulations, we're currently prohibiting attached and detached ADUs within some of these areas. But it did allow for interior conversions and JADUs. So this is a graphic that was attached, which shows kind of radius to bus stops, and it covers most of the city. So that's one of the triggers. So now, when we do look at how close you are to transit, we can measure it according to walking distance. So it does reduce some of these areas and could allow for parking requirements on some of the perimeter locations in the city. In terms of the restricted- In terms of the restricted areas, this is the map of properties that qualified under the parameters we identified working with fire department for restricting ADUs, attached and detached. So, new state laws. Effective January 1st, the city can continue to identify areas that ADUs may not be permitted, but it's based only on these requirements of service and impact of traffic flow and public safety. So we can do that, but there is some question as to whether a whole class of ADUs might be exempted from that requirement. But we are including that in our ordinance for the time being. There are limits to the number of parking spaces. Again, it's, it's been ratcheted up and there's no parking permitted for quite a number of types of ADUs. And there's no parking requirement, or you're not permitted to require parking. In particular, any ADU that's created through a conversion of a garage, you're not required to have parking or to require replacement parking. You're not allowed to require replacement parking.
Those are mandatory standards?
Those are mandatory standards.
Are you, are you still required to maintain the parking, off-site parking required for the R1?
Do you mean the off-street parking?
Uh huh, off-street, I mean, I'm sorry. If, if the garage was created to provide the required parking for the-
No, the state law is actually encouraging the conversion of garages.
Okay.
By, by exempting the replacement parking requirement.
So there's allowing you to replace parking with a housing unit?
With a housing unit, which is in fact, kind of a double, you know.
Right, thank you.
And just, and just for clarification, just without consideration of whether there's a capacity for on-street parking in the vicinity of the houses that could be subject to conversion?
Yeah, there's no language that allows any assessment of that.
There's nothing specific about this law at all. It just says, it's a, it's a, like a sledgehammer.
Yeah.
This is not directly connected. Since the allowance of ADUs and JADUs, how many of those have been permitted in the city of Larkspur? And then how many in the last year?
In the last year, we've had two ADUs permitted. And I would say it, for us, has not gone up at a significant clip. We're getting a few more than we got several years ago, but it's not, it has not been coming at a real significant clip. And we have not had any-
How many years has it been in effect?
Well, I'm sort of going back to like 2015, when we first adopted the JADU ordinance. We've had one to two ADUs a year and no JADUs a year.
So in the six since it started roughly?
Correct.
Two per year, thanks.
Now, we are, and I would say, we are getting a lot of queries and more interest in, in ADUs. I think part of that is a lot of the, sort of, news. A lot of the information sort of going out now. Where we've promoted them somewhat on, you know, through our channels. But it's becoming more commonly known in the development environment and contractors that ADUs, the state is taking a much more open approach to ADUs.
Thank you.
So let's go back to, keep going with your presentation. It's, we still have a thick packet to go through here.
Yeah, let's. It, it essentially overrides floor area coverage setbacks and parking requirements for a variety of, any ADU attached or detached, which is, meets certain criteria of being 800 square feet or less, less than 16 feet in height, and meeting at least four-foot rear and side setbacks. So those are required to be permitted with a building permit, regardless if your site is already overbuilt. Conversion of existing floor space is permitted, not just on single-family sites, but also on multiple-family sites. This is a new twist in the regulation where it's basically mandating at least certain minimums of allowing ADUs on multiple-family dwelling sites. Typically, ADUs have been seen as a tool of, you know, relative to single-family homes. So this is a new approach. It establishes new mandates on minimum and maximum floor area for ADUs. And these vary depending upon the number of bedrooms proposed and the proportion to the size of the main home. And I'll go into a little more detail on how we've parsed that out in the ordinance. So again, it allows ADUs and JADUs on both single-family and multiple-family sites. So it's no longer one or the either. A property can have both an ADU and a JADU. It no longer allows owner occupancy restrictions. And it prohibits the use of short-term rentals for ADUs, which is fine. And again, it must be a ministerial approval, either through an administrative permit or via building permit.
The Planning Commission?
There's no planning review. And in, and in fact, so you have 60 days to act on the, on a complete application. Initially, it had been 120 days, it's now 60 days. And even where it is proposed concurrent with a larger project, like a single-family home, or something that might be subject to discretionary review, it can only be reviewed and permitted ministerially. What the law is suggesting and HCD staff is kind of suggesting is that a larger project would have to go through its own process, but the, in some way, shape, or form, the accessory unit that might be part of that project cannot be a topic of any discussion or at least of any finding in favor, in favor or against that project. So it's an interesting approach. So no public hearings on accessory dwelling units.
So just a, maybe it's a rhetorical question, but given the way this is structured, it essentially eliminates the possibility of any sequel review on the impacts on communities from an environmental perspective of the implementation of this legislation through ordinances or otherwise, correct?
I think if you're referring, referring to the ordinance itself, yes.
Since there's no discretion, then there's no opportunity for a sequel review.
That's correct.
So it essentially eliminates the opportunity for consideration of environmental impacts.
Neil, with the 60 days of, to complete the application, is there a penalty for the city if it's not approved within 60 days?
Well, the, it's kind of a, it's, it's, it's a kind of a typical approach where the applicant can declare, "I'm approved", and maybe I'll let Sky kind of qualify how that works.
Yeah, there's no specific penalty. So it's not like there's a fine involved. But in essence, the applicant would be able to go to court and seek a writ directing the city to issue approval for the project.
I see. Okay, keep going. Boy, this is a significant changes to our existing structure.
And, and interestingly, as part of this legislation, it's, it doesn't affect the, the regulations that we're talking about directly. But it, it requires local governments to include a plan in their housing elements to promote and incentivize ADUs that can be offered at affordable rents for low, very low, and moderate incomes. So it is clarifying ADUs and JDUs can be used in the housing element. However, we still remain unclear how this necessarily applies to RENA. So the legislation hasn't really spelled that out, that you necessarily get a direct RENA benefit from having ADUs because everything still is tied to affordability. And with that, a lot of these mandates that have basically override local regulations have reduced the ability of cities, some cities we know, to provide incentives to have deed restrictions for affordability. For instance, granting extra floor area or granting a parking exception if you make it deed restricted for affordability.
Okay.
So it presents an interesting question of how do you achieve that affordability without having these types of options? I'd also note, the state law requires that any ADU ordinance adopted at this point is then sent to HCD for review within 60 days. They will provide review and comment and identify whether or not you meet state law or are vulnerable. So we have prepared an ordinance, basically working a lot to try to understand the regulations and respond in a way we believe is, to the best of our abilities, able to maintain what level of local control and at least create a process for staff to be able to manage requests that come in, in these various locations. So we anticipate we will just review these in conjunction with building permit applications, requiring a additional information and detail to accompany the building permit as part of that process. If it is related to larger projects, the building permit approval would be delayed until other discretionary approvals are granted. Again, no discretionary review or hearing required for the unit itself. Single-family residential uses, again, you can have one ADU or one JADU and/or both. For multiple-family residential, there, if you have an apartment site, touch, oh, it's back up. From apartment sites or condos, you can have at least one ADU. Interior accessory units can be built at a rate of 25% the number of dwelling units. And you can have up to two exterior units permitted. As far as we can tell, planned unit developments are not exempt from the state regulations. So we would have to, while we typically review, plan, any changes, exterior changes to PDs, these may have to be done as a building permit. The law does also include some provisions for HOAs, not just for the cities, but that HOAs cannot apply unreasonable restrictions to allow ADUs within their CCNRs.
Could I, if, if, sorry, could I, a clarification on that last point on the HOAs? And what, what, what really are the constraints on this law, on the ability of homeowner associations to, outside the framework of city ordinances, but within the context of their CCRs, to impose restrictions? The, the unreasonable restriction standards is kind of vague. But, you know, what happens if a homeowner's association says, "Well, we don't really feel it's appropriate to implement these requirements within the context of our neighborhood"? Is that subjecting the city to any liability if that is challenged?
No. I'll, I'll try to field this and then see, then Sky can help. So I, I don't believe it, it wouldn't subject the city to any challenge because our regulations are really what the, what the city is permitting. And so it'd be a matter of if the homeowner's association allows that property owner or that restricted common area to be used in certain ways. But from what I do understand from the legislation, it's not as, it's not as overriding of a mandate as it, as it is for this local zoning. So it's more or less permissive for the HOAs. But it does, it, it does apply some pressure for HOAs to be more flexible. Again, I don't know the details, but I think it creates the possibility that individual property owners may challenge their HOA to say, "I want to do this" or, you know, "This is reasonable", so.
I was just going to concur that I, I don't think there's, there's much cause for concern about potential city liability from this provision in the state law. The city will just be acting according to its regulatory obligations under state law and issuing permits. And ultimately, it's going to be between this, the HOA and the individual property owners to resolve the issues. But the city will have just complied with its own law, which is typically a defense against any kind of liability.
Right, which is, which is why I asked the question because that's, that's an important consideration for us in this context. But it's something for HOAs to keep in mind in terms of the way they structure any restrictions that they may feel is appropriate for their, their own neighborhoods, so.
Yeah, we're just about through. So other exemptions, interior conversions, really, again, include garage or carport and do not require any parking or replacement parking. So it's fairly liberal in terms of interior conversions. So the interesting exemption, again, is any ADU that is, whether it's attached or detached, if it's 800 square feet or less, 16 feet high, meets four-foot minimum side and rear setbacks. There's no floor area restriction, no lot coverage restriction or parking requirements. So it's theoretically, by the state laws, a building permit only. We have written the ordinance where if, if there are situations where it would trigger other types of significant permits and particularly, it might require a stream bank permits, other resource agency permits, or other tree removal permits, things like that, we think those are applicable. And those are permits that would need to be acquired prior to issuance of the building permit. And again, we've applied the size limits. Must, minimum size allows for an efficiency unit. Maximum size, it's a little interesting, a studio or one-bedroom. The maximum limitation is 850 square feet. So we're applying that for two bedrooms, it's 1,000 square feet. And three or more bedrooms, it's 1,200 square feet or 50% the size of the existing primary dwelling, whichever is less. So we're, we're going up to the maximum minimums prescribed by the state. We're eliminating the 4,000-square-foot exception because that's basically been superseded by the state regulations. We are continuing to apply the restricted areas based on emergency access and evacuation concerns. And we're revising that, so it applies to all accessory dwelling units and junior units. Feedback from the city attorney's office is that the rationale for doing this would be better, more defensible on the basis of protecting, protecting against all types of dwelling units or that type of expansion. And I would note with this, I'll discuss later, but the Planning Commission suggested revisiting these areas and the parameters for that and looking at whether that's, needs to be expanded. So that's, again, a look at the areas that are currently restricted. Those are the properties.
So Neil, is there a reason why we have several high-hazard fire zones in our municipal code, which are based on topography and egress and access for emergency services? Several of those aren't on that restricted list. Is there a reason for that?
Well, we worked with the fire department and did not restrict solely based on the high-hazard fire zone standard itself.
Okay.
Because the high-hazard fire zone is not entirely based upon access, ingress, egress. It's largely a, if I understand correctly, it's largely defined due to the hazard of hillside and vegetative woodland conditions.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, that when, when the fire department, in conjunction with the other departments, looked at this for the last round of updates, it was a very detailed analysis down to like portions of streets about where they felt that the addition of units with, with more residents would create risk to their ability to provide service and for the individual, and for the new individuals to be able to, to leave. So it, it's, it's based on a, on a, on a much more refined basis because we did want to make it as narrow, as small and compact as possible. to make it as narrow, as small and compact as possible.
And we did include some architectural standards because, again, these are sites, you, you have to be able to apply standards and not subjective design requirements. And we've tried to address some concerns that might exist for second-story additions. We think those are, generally would be rare, but if they are facing towards neighbors, they'd require a higher silite. And so, with that, because of the state mandates, we are looking to add some deed restrictions. We can no longer require the owner occupancy, of course, but we have included a restriction that they actually maintain the second unit. The city cannot require how they, exactly how they rent or how they occupy the second unit, but that they must at least keep up the bathing and sleeping and eating facilities that define a second unit. Because they're essentially getting, in many cases, will be getting a floor area bonus or development bonus for this use. It cannot be short-term rental, and termination of the use requires correction of nonconforming conditions created by the ADU. If they do take out parking or they do not meet a setback under these regulations, if they remove that ADU, that should be reconciled. Yes?
When a property adds these accessory units, are they required to create certain conditions on the property consistent with subdivision map act? Or are they required to create HOAs? Or are there legal frame for the ownership?
No, I, I think generally for single-family, most single-family or single-ownership sites, that won't be the case, other, other than, you know, access for fire and emergency purposes and building code.
So, so from the building code perspective, separations and assemblies and everything still apply?
That's correct.
Are they separate, they're all separately utilityed and metered?
Trying to remember.
So...
I think they don't have to be.
I believe there might be some, some, if I'm remembering correctly, there may be some edge cases where it is, but for the most part, the ADUs are going to be allowed to tie into the existing utilities.
Consistent with...
Existing meters, so that basically they're not required to be separately metered and can use the existing connections for the, for the primary residence.
But separations and assemblies would still apply?
Correct.
According to the fire code?
Yes.
Thanks.
Am I correct that all new construction of single-family homes in California have to have solar access? Is that this year or next? Has to have solar panels?
That might, that may be next year. It's not required to have solar panels, but it's required to have, I think, fitting and ability to provide for solar.
Do we need to do, is that required also for these?
No.
Okay.
And interesting, again, it's, it's an interesting balance because they're trying to reduce the costs and the obstacles to creating the second units.
Right.
And so, in, kind of wrapping this up, we did review this with the planning commission on December 10th. They, we discussed a few items on, in the proposed amendments, and they adopted a resolution recommending approval as proposed. And they did include language that they added to have the city council suggest that we move forward to look at the restricted areas and whether those should be expanded. The concern being you're essentially creating the potential for, you know, single-family homes in the hills to convert to two, or in fact, in some cases, three, units, and while reducing, potentially reducing parking, what's already might be substandard parking in our areas that have narrow streets and limited street parking. So, that is their suggestion. We do think that would take a bit of time to work back and kind of re-review how that might be applied. We might want some guidance on how, how significant the, an issue that seems to the council and how to pursue it. I would note, in discussion with other planning directors even this afternoon, other communities have these concerns with some of their hillside neighborhoods, and there is discussion about trying to look at the metrics of evacuation routes and how there might be a, more of an applicable or county-wide standard to really look at, at what qualifies as a challenged evacuation route. And it's also a concern in some of the RENA methodology that's being discussed, areas of hillside, high-fire zones with constricted access, and whether that should be a higher factor in applying the RENA methodology. So, that certainly is a concern in RENA. So, we have, as we noted, we've prepared an emergency, urgency interim ordinance, that's our next item of discussion, and that could take effect immediately. It would be in effect for 45 days and can be extended up to 22 months. That can be an interim measure. As recommended, we've provided a recommendation that the council waive first reading and continue to adopt at the next meeting. This would make it go into effect in early March, as written. Alternatively, the council could continue the matter if there's questions or items of consideration you want to review. The interim ordinance does give us a little opportunity to have a placeholder while we consider other, any other concerns or issues. And I do note that a number of the communities have been sending their interim ordinances and/or permanent ordinances up to HCD, and HCD is probably experiencing, experiencing its own learning curve on this legislation and how agencies or local agencies are reacting to it. But I'm sensing a little bit of, a variety of responses and concerns. So, it's something we could do to really test the waters with HCD in terms of the ordinance we have.
Thank you, Neil, very much for that presentation.
Any other questions?
Well, hold on.
And I have with me Lorraine Weiss. She's been very helpful in helping review the materials and get the ordinance together.
Great. Before we go any further, could I ask somebody in the back to open the door? I think that it's getting stuffy in here and the conversation in the corridor has ended, probably. Thank you. All right, so we'll bring it to the council, and if there are questions of our planning and building director, go ahead, Gabe.
Yeah, Neil, thank you so much. I, I, you know, kind of distilled this as, you know, a very complex set of regulations. And in my mind, it's, it's, you know, from the point of view of a city Larkspur resident, it's coming to your commission with 16 checklists, you know, height, parking, setback, deed, and, you know, 12 others, and it used to be a list of a lot of no's, and you've taken a lot of the no's away. I mean, that's the essence of what I see in everything here. My question to you is, I, and, and again, I'm fairly new to this, I don't quite understand the regulatory framework. So, SB 35 is, is, you know, asking the city to meet certain goals and to set up incentives. Are we responsible merely for creating incentives or are we also responsible for the outcomes? So, say in a few years, if only one or two units a year continue as, you know, since the 2015 housing element, is that something that, that's a problem for us?
It is increasingly becoming a problem. We are, we are now, performance is now becoming part of the review process for both housing element and RENA, application of RENA numbers, and as well as potentially overriding local zoning standards for those communities that don't meet their numbers, having to apply, eliminating discretionary process.
So, so if I could just jump in for a second, you know, as an extreme, would it be possible, you know, the scenario for the state of California to say, "You know what, 2020, 2021, 2022, you add six more building permits, six more JDUs or whatever." We think that the deeding restriction, you know, if this can actually subdivide and a garage can become, you know, separate, that would increase the market forces and that would bring in more of these units and drive up supply. Is, is that kind of thing a possible scenario?
Well, I'm, I'm still not sure I understand the question exactly. Is, is the, is the question whether adding, the, the state is attempting to increase the, like, increase the market value to create the supply?
No, no, it's simpler. If, if we aren't really seeing any increase in affordable units, I'm jumping to, you know, AB 761 or just, you know, the SB 35, you know, that we're not getting more, is, is, is there going to be pressure to change, amend this ordinance or other measures taken? So, in other words, is this ordinance really meant to show that we're making a good effort to increase housing and affordability?
Maybe I could jump in.
Garage is into condos?
I think, I think you, you have two tracks of, of issues that you're trying to capture there. So, the first part is, is there the possibility that if the state doesn't see these regulatory changes resulting in more housing, will they go back and amend the regulations? I'd say there's a pretty darn good chance that, that that will happen if they don't feel this had a good effect. But, what that looks like, I have no idea. You know, this is kind of flavor of the month regulatory scheming going on here, that this is the current thing folks think will solve a problem. It might be a different flavor in two years. Your other question, which I'm only going to touch on, it's a bigger topic that we aren't really set up to answer today, is what will happen? Will we be penalized for lack of performance on the realization of housing? There are movements afoot at both the state and at regional level to tie pots of money that the cities rely on to outcomes, which is, of course, problematic because we're not in the business of making the housing. So, but, but that is a movement afoot, and that's how they'll do it, is that they'll basically dangle pots of money we've relied on that haven't been tied to outcomes of housing production, to housing production.
Thank you.
But just to clarify, that, that's, that specific issue really isn't teed up by this proposal that we're talking about.
No, and that's why I wanted to say it's a topic, it's a broader topic for another day, but it more directly answers councilmember Paulson's question.
Right. I mean, this raises lots of other kind of ancillary issues that are important from a policy point of view for the city as well as other communities throughout the state of California. We can't deal with all of that within the framework of our desire to comply with the requirements of state law in this specific context.
Not tonight.
Any other questions at this time?
No, thank you.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing has been opened. This allows opportunities for members of the community to come forward and ask questions about this item number 7.2.
Can I bring up something we're not talking about?
No.
To stick with this particular item, we did have open public comment period earlier in the, in the, in the meeting time, but we are dealing with this issue right now. So, yes, sir, come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Pat Clifford. I just wanted to ask two questions. Would this require the ADU to be sprinkled, and would it be subject to the rent cap?
To the rent cap?
Yeah.
Okay. So, those are two questions that have come out. Do we have an answer to those?
The zoning regulation here does not require the ADU to be sprinkled.
And then what about rent, the rent stabilization?
And I believe that is applicable.
If, if, if the property owner did rent the ADU, AB 1482 requirements that, that we've talked about at previous meetings would, would apply to the ADU if it were put into the rental market.
Okay.
It would also apply to the home too, as well, right? You would no longer be exempt.
So, those, the question is whether the ADU is rented, would it then have the rent control issue, not control, what's the...
Well, basically, it would be subject to the AB 1482 rent cap.
Rent cap, okay.
Rent increases, but I'm not sure that the single, if it were, if the ADU were built on a single-family home property and the property owner lived in the ADU and rented the primary residence, I don't believe that AB 1482 applied to single-family.
What if they rent them separately?
You now have two units.
Yeah, and one would, one would be and one might not be.
Hold on just a second, let's hear.
One, the AD, my recollection is that, that ADUs are subject to the rent, to the, to the cap on rent increases. I'm not sure that it applies to a single-family home. So, if both were rented, then one would be subject and one would not.
Okay. That's our answer.
Okay. It's been ruled otherwise in San Francisco.
Oh, okay. Well, that guess, there's still questions we, since this is the first reading of this, we'll have some of these questions answered. Is there anybody else from the community? Yes, Mr. Holmes?
James Holmes, Larkspur. I hope that the council members had a chance to read the IJ article in about two months ago that really set forth how horrendous this bill was. I was going to, unfortunately, I, I provided the planning commission misplaced it for this. One, the abolition of the owner requirement is, is a debacle because that's the major way to keep things under control, and the article pointed out that this would, this will lead to, if no owner occupancy, there will be a greatly enhanced increase by investors, investment companies in, in buying these, and this will drive up the costs, not make them more affordable, because now we're basically required to abolish zoning, single-family zoning, according to the article, and have three, three, threeplexes, triplexes as a matter of right. The other thing the planning commission pointed out, which was a wonderful catch, is that this basically does away with the FAR because people can add these, add this additional space, say it's going to be a, an ADU or JDU, and, you know, structure it that way, but then use it as a, as additional space. So, F, the FAR has been circumvented, according to the planning commission, good catch, and I think this is one of the things that, that, why we should look at this with a great deal of, of concern. But, in terms of what we can do right now, I think the, the ordinance addresses that, but I think the planning commission's recommendation to further look at enhancing the restricted areas is a very, very good idea, and certainly is consistent with the comment that I made. There was public inquiry, although the staff report says there was none. But anyhow, there are, if, if you look on page 13 of the amendment, of the proposed ordinance, you'll see the criteria for restricted areas, very clear, but there are many, many other areas in Larkspur on a road-by-road basis which would satisfy these criteria. For example, Bridge Road, Onyx Court, most of the Hazel Laurel Loop, part of Locust, and I'm sure many others. So, I feel that it is very, very important that we continue to review the other areas which could be considered restricted areas based on the rational criteria here because there is no rational basis for differentiating between some of these other streets and, and the already identified restricted areas. The already identified restricted areas are fine, but there are many, many others that meet this criteria. The one other item I wanted to raise is a technical point. It is on page 13, again, that's the definition of restricted areas, it's point 025B, and it says, "The restrictions of section A shall apply to all properties that have vehicular access from," and then it lists streets. The problem or the potential concern I want to raise is there are a number of properties which do not, which are on those streets and in those areas, but they do not have vehicular access. They are only accessed by stairways, so that I am concerned that this could be read to allow those properties which are accessible only by stairways to, to exclude that from the restricted areas. I don't think that's the intent. A possibility would be just to remove the word vehicular access or add vehicular or, or other access, or foot access, something like that. But in any event, this could be a glitch because certainly the areas that are, or the properties that are accessible only by stairways, the concern... the properties that are accessible only by stairways, the concerns about safety apply with equal force or greater force to those.
Thank you very much for that. Did you, do you see that on the page 13?
No. You want me to show the?
No, sorry, I think we have it here.
Page 12.
Page 12?
Page 13.
What, in, in, in reference to that comment, do you have any feedback on that comment about that adding stair? I don't know how many dwellings we have in this community that only have access by stair or I guess on the boardwalk, it's accessed by boardwalk.
Well, I think, I think we'd probably want to review it with the fire department. One of the, one of the primary, the metric for what they were looking at in terms of what's creating a potential evacuation concern was the, the vehicle load onto those streets. So there was some purpose behind having it as vehicle access primarily onto those streets. Some of these are through lots which have opportunities for access on the more accessible streets. So that was actually the basis of criteria, but I recognize what Mr. Holmes is referring to is there are properties in those areas that are, there are a few that are accessed primarily just by stairways and so.
So since this is our first reading, if that, if we decide that that's something we want to add, it wouldn't be difficult to add that? Or is it necessary?
You wouldn't be able to add it prior to adoption, but it, but I think it's something that, that if it, if the council wants further review of the question, it's something that can be done during the course of the year and then brought back and, and the municipal code amended to address the list of, of areas that are within the restricted area.
Okay.
And you can create conditions for those properties that.
That's correct.
Microphone, please.
But just for clarification, that would be within the framework of the suggestion that the planning commission has made.
Exactly. It's, it's consistent with the planning.
So there's not, we don't have to go beyond what that recommendation involves?
No, because they did not recommend holding up adoption of the ordinance, they just said to, to further examine the restricted areas.
Right. So if we, so if we, if we accept that recommendation from the planning commission, we have flexibility to deal with this issue during the course of time.
That's correct.
Sounds like a good solution.
Sounds like a good one. So the public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this matter? All right, seeing that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Further questions based on anything you've heard recently?
Just a quick one. Neil, I'm not sure I have the full map, but the restricted areas right now look like essentially Madrone and part of Baltimore in the yellow and then south Magnolia. Is, is that correct or am I, am I not reading the map right?
I think that is.
Yeah, it's, you're correct, it's pretty much deep, deep in Madrone, past Olive and some properties up in that direction. But then, as you get south Magnolia, it's more as you go up the hill onto Marina Vista and back into some of those neighborhoods. So it's not the properties that are fed more directly off of Magnolia Avenue.
Okay, so no restrictions on Hillview, for example, or any other?
No, not at this point. Not at this point.
And I just, I want to emphasize again that, that these are, this definition and the areas identified are carried forward from the existing municipal code and are based on a pretty thorough and detailed review by the fire department where they made an individual determination based on their experience and expertise about where they thought they would either be able to get trucks or where people would have an accessible route of egress. So while we can definitely review it, I just wanted, for the record, to, to be clear that this was something that, what's on, what's in the municipal code right now is a reflection of a very detailed review by the fire department.
Okay.
And, and just for clarification, that includes everywhere in Larkspur, including the hills and greenbry.
That's correct.
So it looks like the recommendation, if there's no further questions, the recommendation from staff is to adopt ordinance, let's see what the number is, 1045, under our business item or our hearing item number 7.2, and waive the first reading of that. Is that, am I getting this right, Neil? And the second recommendation is, and we need to take these separately, right? 7.3, we have to take separately?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll stop at 7.2. And then it's also recommended, one of the recommendations then is also to recognize the planning commission's public hearing statement and acknowledging that we are also interested in having further analysis of our restricted areas. Is that the second part of what we're interested in tonight?
And I think that would be, could be done as a sort of a separate motion, it wouldn't be part of the adoption of this ordinance. But it-
But I don't even think, it wouldn't be a motion, it would, it would be more of a, of a direction. Yes, okay. Okay, does everybody feel comfortable with that?
So moved.
So it looks like I need a motion.
One at a time.
I need a motion for ordinance 1045 in the city council, the city of Larkspur, amending chapter 18.23 accessory dwelling units and 18.24 junior accessory dwelling units of the Larkspur municipal code to comply with the 2019 state housing legislation.
So that's, that's a motion to introduce and waive first reading of the ordinance?
Yes, yes.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Great. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? No? Thank you for that, Neil. And second, I think it sounds like we have some consensus about giving direction that is, that is consistent with what the planning commission.
Just for the sake of the record, I just want to make clear, you should still open the public hearing, I don't expect there to be additional public comments about it, but, but this is listed as a public.
For 7.3.
7.3.
Oh, not there yet, but I will.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. We're still looking at the planning commission action and giving direction that we are also in agreement with the planning commission's suggestion of looking at the restricted areas in, in the next opportunity.
I would suggest that that's a consensus on the council.
Okay.
I think that direction was given during the discussion about the previous action.
Okay, so now, anything further on that one, Neil?
No.
Okay. So now we'll move on to 7.3, which is a consideration of adoption of an interim ordinance, temporarily amending chapters 18.23 accessory dwelling units and 18.2 junior accessory dwelling units of the city of Larkspur municipal code to comply. Would you like to give us?
Well, there's, there's, I'm not going to really say much on this.
Not going to go through this packet again?
No. Other than, I think on top of the, the, the need to reconcile our housing issues and meet RENA numbers is, is important, but at the same hand, one of the necessities for adopting this as an interim ordinance is right now, we're kind of in that gap where the state law sort of null and voids our current regulations and we have to fall back on state law, which is not really written as a, as a local regulation. And I think if anything, the most important thing is for us to have fairly clear guidance on how we can tell people, you know, what our process is and what they can or can't do and as opposed to people pointing at the state regulations. So this is largely to avoid the, the headache or conflict that might come up through proposals that are, result in all sorts of interpretive challenges.
All right. Are there questions of, Neil, on this part? It's essentially a opportunity to wait and see what's happening. I just want to note that four out of five are required by city council in order to adopt this ordinance. Any, like to open the public hearing on this matter, which is an urgency ordinance to allow us to have a little bit more time to work on this matter? No one? All right. Public hearing is closed and I'll bring it back to the council for either further conversation or, or a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, which is to adopt the urgency ordinance number 1044. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? No. So we have four out of five of us and that ordinance passes. Terrific. Thank you, Neil. So we are moving on to 7.4 in the public hearing, which is the adoption of multiple different amending sections to our municipal code.
But before we move on to that, could I just offer just one personal observation? I think the actions that the council is taking with respect to these, these two matters is appropriate and obviously I wouldn't have voted for them if I didn't think that was true. At the same time, the fact that we're in the position where we have to move forward with these actions is troubling. We are in the process of losing local control over our, our ability to manage land use decisions and this is just one more example of that. There's not a lot we can do in the context of a city council determination on these specific matters, but I do encourage the public who's here tonight and may be watching on video to pay attention to these issues very closely because this is not the end of it. There is other legislation that is currently now being recirculated, SB 50, in the state legislature, which will continue the direction that the legislature has taken to eliminate local control over what has historically been decision-making by cities like, like ours and it's, it's a troubling thing. So if there are, if there's an interest on the public to, to take that into account, please contact our legislators and make sure that your voices are heard. I'm doing that and I encourage everyone who's listening to the hearing tonight to take that into account as well.
Thank you for those comments. And in regards to that, there was just an email sent by the League of California Cities' North Bay Representative Nancy Hall Bennett to your matter today. It just came out reflecting on how we need to be paying attention to some of these up and coming legislation that's going on. All right, so we will open the public hearing 7.4. If we would have a staff report, please.
Okay, thank you Mayor Way and members of the city council. This is a largely obligatory second public hearing on the update to the California Building Code and other parts of the municipal code dealing with trees. So essentially, every three years, the state creates a new building code standard and we're adopting those updates by reference. Included in this, we have worked with the fire department on aligning some parts of both the building code and our, our local building regulations and heritage tree regulations with the fire department's fire code and practices. So those include some updates to the resale reports to better reflect vegetation management requirements. We're clarifying undergrounding utilities, so that will occur in the, in conjunction with substantial renovations. It is sought to bring utilities underground where possible. And we're also expanding the list of what are now called fire, I'm sorry, no longer pyrophitic trees. So those are trees that can be removed by the agreement and/or order of the fire marshal. So we're, we're recognizing that in the heritage tree code. So with that, this would be a recommendation to waive second reading and adopt ordinance 1043, amending Title 15 building and provisions, adopting by reference provisions of the 2019 California Building Standards Code Title 24.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there questions?
Ready to make a motion.
Well, wait, it's a public hearing, we need to hear. Thank you for that. This was very thoroughly presented to us in the first reading, so I appreciate that. And I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to ask questions or make comments on ordinance, on public hearing item number 7.4? All right, seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for further consideration or questions or discussion. Seeing none, I'll-
I encourage the motion to be remade.
I'll move that the city council waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1043 to amend the following sections of the Larkspur municipal code.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? No. Thank you very much. Ordinance 1043 passes. Now we're moving on to number eight, which is business item, which we have one, only one business item tonight, which is the Larkspur City Council Committee Appointments for 2020. Do we have a staff report?
It's really your item, Mayor, but I do want to note for the benefit of the public that on the dais in the back of the room, there was an amendment made at the request of the Marin City Council, mayors and city-
Marin.
Marin, mayors and city council members, because they've, they've initiated a new ad hoc committee on climate change action and they had requested clarification who would represent Larkspur, so the mayor asked that we amend and add that to the list.
And that's been highlighted in yellow for those who are looking. So just for the benefit of the public, every year, the council serves on various committees that are city committees and countywide committees and some are even statewide committees. And we serve as voting and policymakers on those and sometimes we just serve as liaisons so that we can provide feedback to other of our committees in here. Thank you, Neil. So this is the committee appointments for 2020 as worked through with all of the council members. So do I have a motion to accept this?
I'll move that we ratify the mayor's appointments for 2020.
Are there any?
Second.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? No. Terrific. Now we are adjoining to closed session, which means that we will be leaving this room and going to closed session and then after that's over, we'll be returning shortly to reconvene and announce if there's any reportable action. You're welcome to stay, but at this point, the main part of the city council meeting has been adjourned. Welcome back to the Larkspur City Council meeting of January 15th, 2020. We have returned from closed session and we have no reportable action to report tonight. So at this point, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjournment of the meeting? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Good night.